Okay, good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, August 17th. And if you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, let's see. We have David Beam signed up for some public comments. David, if you're welcome, you want to come up and say hello? Right over to the side here. I think we got a little...
Yeah. Commissioners, I have had a couple meetings with the new mayor of Portland on a homeless problem in the state. So I am, me and him working out of Dale, get this homeless problem fixed as soon as possible in every county in the state. So I want the registrar to is fund the drop-in center for all the disability people and middle-of-the-ill people in the counties that once can't get served after five o'clock. Marion County, after five o'clock, it ain't nothing there for middle-of-the-ill and disabled people because they don't got nowhere else to go at five o'clock. Lot of them were just hanging around downtown, got nowhere else to go to get help. So I was thinking, we have a drop-in center, we used to have this drop-in center for Salem area a long time ago, and it worked for Salem area. So I wanted to get this started as soon as possible at the registrar and asked the governor, would she look at that? And she said she would look at that. So I urge all the county commissioners, Anne, Portland, Salem, Eugene, Woodburn, look at this problem. I think we can fix this as soon as possible because we wouldn't be in this mess today. Today's my birthday.
And I think we knew that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. And I urge everybody to go out to the State Fair, come to the State Fair, and then do businesses for the Salem area. Urge that, and get this homeless thing done as soon as possible. That'd be a good thing for Oregon.
We have, David, we have a little, for you being here and your birthday today, we have a little presentation for you if you want to join us right here in front of the diocese. Angela's gonna take a picture for you. Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
Little card and a gift for you.
How many birthdays is that?
Say.
A lot.
A lot.
Right.
All right. Everybody ready? Okay, one, two, three. I'm gonna do one more. One, two, three. Okay, now you have to open your present.
All right, you gotta open it. Another thing, including your scratch paper.
Maybe we look at that.
Yeah, you would. Yeah. I got to the back.
So that's a bulb works out, but you can also use it when you're hunting.
Thank you. I work all my meetings. Thank you.
Thanks for being here today. Happy birthday!
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are onto our consent calendar. It's always good to see you, David. Thank you. And I believe it's your turn.
Yes, it is. So Chair Cameron, I make the motion that we approve the consent calendar this morning. Under it, on it, is under Board of Commissioners, Noel C.C., application with a recommended approval for Carneseria Las Compadres. I thought there wouldn't be any hard words, I didn't see that one. Salem, Oregon. Business Services, approve a recommendation to adopt and establish a new classification, Corrections Paramedic, Class Code Number 166. Approve a recommendation to adjust upward pay grade for Chief Civil Supervisor, Class Code 138. Public Works, approve the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation to exchange $62,000 in federal funds or $52,280 in state funds for the North Avenue Bike-Ped Enhancement Project. And approve Amendment 1 to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation to allow Marion County to seek certification in bridge design.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion second. Any further discussion? Do you want to repeat the name of that restaurant?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Good, and we're on to our action item, and this is a continuation of last week. Cindy Schmidt is here from Public Works to consider approval of a, of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for $929,190 for upgrading traffic signals throughout the county.
Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioners. You guys were so quick this morning on your calendar, I'm not sure if I'm ready yet.
What's that?
I said you were so quick this morning on your calendar, I'm not sure if I'm quite ready yet.
We're gonna be done here in record time today.
I think so.
Well, I tried to set it right.
Right.
This isn't an Olympic deal.
No.
Okay, good.
We're getting the gold.
Well, my name is Cindy Schmidt. I'm the county engineer in our Public Works Department, and we do have a couple more agreements we would like the board to consider approving this morning for some of our upcoming projects. The reason that we've had so many agreements here recently is because we've, we've been fairly successful in obtaining federal grants for various roadway construction projects, and we're trying to get all the intergovernmental agreements in place to obligate those funds before the end of the current federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. So we're executing these agreements for, I think about, probably about nine projects in total that we will be able to begin our preliminary engineering work on shortly into the fall, so. And these are projects that will be constructed over the next two to three years. So I do have a little short PowerPoint to kind of share with you some of the components of these projects. This first one is the intergovernmental agreement for our traffic signal interconnect project. Bad karma with this machine here, so. The traffic signal interconnect project is kind of a fun one because it's, it's been a kind of a creative process, and we're trying to address a number of issues in one project. To start off, Marion County was successful in receiving some urban transportation funds to interconnect our traffic signals on three of our primary arterial corridors in the Salem area. Lancaster Drive, in particular, we lack interconnect on the north end of Lancaster Drive, and this, this project would connect those signals together. And I'll talk a little bit in a minute about what the benefit is of connecting signals together and why we do it. Another corridor of prime concern is our Silverton Road corridor, and then, of course, our Corden Road corridor running along the east side of Salem. And the, the purpose of these interconnects is to allow for more efficient progression of traffic. When we start seeing the high, high traffic volumes on these corridors, congestion at each intersection becomes obvious to everyone, and by timing those signals together such that you can accommodate flow along a corridor is really beneficial for everybody. In addition, the reason this project is, is kind of unique is that we also have some data needs for the county and for all the agencies in this Salem metropolitan area in order to manage our data and interconnect our buildings and our networks together so that we can do more efficient business on a day-to-day basis. And a lot of that infrastructure is lacking even in the Salem area today. So we have combined some local funding or county funding from various departments to add to this project because what you physically put out there to control the signals is the same type of fiber network that you use for data management. So we've been able to add some components to this that would allow the county's IT system and data network to work better and also serve the signal interconnect purpose. And then, more recently, we also were able to obtain some federal funds on behalf of the city of Salem to also do some work on the south end of the Corden Road corridor, which would get us down to the, to the developing Mill Creek Corporate Center. And so we're kind of putting all this together in one project, which is a huge savings for the area overall to do it at one time. And these next couple of slides just simply show some of the additional work we're doing primarily for purposes of data management. And in this particular one is for the benefit of the Health Department building located off of Lancaster and Wolverine. So this is actually inside the city limits of Salem, but we, we would incorporate this into our project, and this particular part is something that was budgeted in the Health Department's budget. And then this particular piece here is on Center Street, also inside Salem city limits, which would allow our juvenile and health departments to be located to the bigger system, improving that interconnectivity. So we would be coming from existing facilities that are on city of Salem streets controlling their signals, and then we would extend that into our county buildings. And then this is a primary piece that is downtown Salem here, which helps connect this facility here with some of the primary network, and that would run along Court Street. And that's it for that particular project, but I'll go back and point out the piece on this map here on Corden Road. The additional funds we were able to obtain for the city of Salem's benefit and for all our benefit is to extend the fiber from McClay Street Intersection, McClay Road, down across Highway 22 to the Mill Creek Corporate Center, and that allowed us, at county funding, to also add a little piece which would allow us to connect the jail and the dog shelter to that greater system. So it'll be a very beneficial project, I think, in the long run. It's, overall, it's about $1,003,000, but it's about the 919,000 of that is the federal funds. The remainder is the, the various shares that departments are putting in to make it a whole project, so. Can I answer any questions about the project particularly?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I do, I'm a little, I just need some clarification. Are we, are we doing this like where you said we're, we're going from Center Street into the Health Department? Is that just to get fiber into the Health Department? Just so they have a better internet connection? Is that what this, that's about?
Yes, yes. There, there's existing fiber in some of the county facilities that, for example, ties the Juvenile Department building to the Health Department building that sit beside each other.
Right.
But their connection to the rest of the county network is happening through other means that are not as efficient.
Okay.
And so this new fiber connection would give them the best available fiber optic connection to internet, to our county's network and data system.
So just, just so I'm, just so we're clear, John is working, Latimer's working with the city, Salem Kaiser School District to extend fiber on their plans. Are we coordinating this with what's going on with what he's working on, SERUP and Community Services, their whole master plan for fiber?
Yes, Commissioner, we are.
Okay.
Their, the Salem Kaiser School District funded portion, we've been coordinating regularly through a series of meetings to see how much overlap there is between these two systems.
Okay, so you're, you're involved in that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we're eliminating kind of the redundancy, and honestly, their system will operate somewhat independently of ours. There's surprisingly little redundancy in the two that will end up, so, but we've been able to make some good decisions, I think, for both projects to coordinate, so.
Thank you. Cindy, just so I understand, maybe you said this and I didn't hear, and I see on the map a linkage up on Silverton Road to the Public Works. Did you say that, and it, does it include that?
I did not say that, but it, that is the case.
Okay.
Yes, I forgot to mention that. The, that's again from the intersection, the federal funds for the traffic signal interconnect are covering the project from Lancaster to the signal at Corden Road. The additional piece we need to get from the Corden Road, Silverton Road signal into our Public Works campus is actually part of the county-funded fiber project, so.
So what would people see? You've kind of hinted about signal interconnects. How will that affect the driving public? Does it mean more precise measurement, or I think it's monitored in Salem, does it change that? What's the advantage to people driving, or is it just make sure the system works, it's not really an upgrade in terms of flow?
I think the advantage that, that primarily the driving public will see is on some of these corridors, they are gonna see a noticeable improvement in their progression, for example, on their way to work in the morning.
Timing, between lights.
The timing of the signals will be such that they won't have to stop at maybe every other red light. You can't make it a perfect system when you start getting really, really busy on, for example, Lancaster Drive. You try to accommodate as much of the flow of traffic as you can, but when you accommodate it in one direction, it sacrifices a little bit maybe in another direction or on a cross street. But it just ties the system together so that the, the majority of your flow can be accommodated more smoothly, less stop-and-go in your traffic.
I might be making this up out of my memory, driving through Salem, if it was 30 miles an hour and you held that, you could go right through, and that doesn't work anymore. This is more downtown than what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But I was hoping it'd get more towards that. And then I just, so I understand, the fiber is just kind of a secondary purpose, you're there anyway, or does that make these signals, is it, they're using this fiber to operate the signals or control them, or is it just, you're going anyway and you add additional line here regardless, it doesn't, isn't really a traffic?
Well, for traffic signal control and for this project, you normally would install 96 pair fiber, which has Gads of capacity based on what we're using today. And so the traffic signals use that fiber to communicate with each other, and they also use it to communicate to the Salem's Signal Central Station. And so the Salem can remotely program the timing and adjust things as needed without having to go out and visit each signal.
Oh.
And so because you're putting in 96 pair, it also allows you to get more video to and from your signals, because we have video detection at a lot of our traffic signals so that it detects cars in order to know when to trigger the signal, and those, those zones and views have to be massaged.
That sounds alike.
Yeah.
And I appreciate Cindy using scientific terms for me, Gads. That was a, that was a, she knows who she's talking to.
Gads?
Lots.
So I still can get through Salem if I drive, in the morning?
Do you?
Yeah, if you hit the, if you hit the green, first green light correctly, like on Commercial Street going, or Liberty Street going north, and if you're, you're under 30, you can just about get all the way through northbound. I don't know how it works southbound, but...
I suspect some areas of the area are better linked, or said that's probably why.
Depending on the traffic. If it's really heavy traffic in the morning, it doesn't matter. It's backed up. So, so for example, Corden Road, because we keep talking about, excuse me, making sure Corden Road is, is a, what, a bypass or opportunity in the future?
Beltline, maybe.
Yeah. So by linking those signals up, if you're doing, what, 55, in a lot of places, 45 to 55, if you're flowing, those signals will match up better at certain times is what this will help us with.
That will in the, in the long run.
Right now, the volumes and the spacing of our signals on Corden are such that the average
motorists on Corden probably won't notice a lot of difference today, but over time, as the traffic continues to grow and we get more intersections and signals, it will be very noticeable.
Okay. Any other questions?
So did you ask this already, following along? You asked a lot of my questions because I didn't understand the difference between signals and fiber, but is there any chance that we're gonna be putting a signal out at the Juvenile Health Department anytime soon, or the city of Salem is?
At the Juvenile, oh, on, you're talking about on Center Street?
Yeah, so, so turning left there is like a major deal.
I'm not aware of any plans to do that. I, I know it's been discussed many times over the years, and with some of the improvements to Center Street, adding that left turn pocket and, and some of the progression that they'll have along there, I think it's helped some of the problems of getting in and out of those accesses, but I'm not aware of any current plans to signalize that.
And just, this isn't a traffic signal question, but there is a signal from the state hospital now up at that one street, and I don't know whether or not we could feed our folks, you know, down when we're doing that construction project so that there, people can get out with a light, you know? It's just something to think about. So.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
We'll entertain a motion.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for $929,190 for upgrading traffic signals throughout the county.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and Cindy, you're still up. Consider approval of intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for $588,000 to upgrade traffic signals at the intersection of Lancaster Drive and McClay Road.
Yes, again, thank you, Commissioner. This project is one that we recently received some grant funds to construct from the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study. This project involves a replacement of a signal at Lancaster Drive and McClay Road that's located in southeast Salem in the Four Corners area, and the total project price is about $750,000, of which $588,000 would be the federal funds, reimbursement funds. The remaining, the remaining portion is made up of the local match that we have to provide, predominantly our staff match and a little bit of cash match. So the issue here is that we have a fairly old traffic signal. It's at the end of its useful life. It's quite outdated in terms of the equipment and the poles, the size of the head, signal heads and that kind of thing. Also, there are some limitations in the area for disabled folks to use the facilities and maneuver around that intersection. We have some drainage issues that we'll clean up as part of this project, and then we're gonna certainly do a lot of sidewalk and a little bit of bike lane improvement. So this particular diagram here just shows the concept of what we're doing. There's currently a traffic signal there now, and Lancaster Drive is in pretty good shape. McClay Road itself, though, is fairly narrow, and we've just got a couple of lanes squeezed in there side by side. So this is the opportunity, when we're replacing the signal, to do some improvements on McClay approach to allow a left turn and a right turn of a reasonable size and to also put in a little piece of the bike lane on the north side. Now, we will be increasing the radiuses a little bit, so not a lot of construction here other than in this area on, on McClay itself on the north side to just accommodate a little widening. And I've got some photos here that show what we have out there today. You can see there's an old-style mast arm signal, and you can barely in these photos see the signal indication. That's just kind of, the older style equipment is a lot smaller, and everything now is bigger and stronger and, you know, will last us another 50 years when we get it out there. But as you can see, we don't have really any good place for the pedestrians to walk to get to the signal poles, to be able to cross Lancaster or across McClay, and these are both very, very busy roads. So this'll be a good project. It will happen relatively quickly and fairly minor construction, and another benefit is that we own most, or we already have right-of-way along here, so we really don't have to acquire right-of-way from properties and that kind of thing. And then the ADA improvements alone will be very beneficial because we do have a lot of walkers out here, all ages, all times of the day, so it's a very busy area. So with that, I guess I can answer any questions, and would ask you to consider approving the agreement so that we can move ahead with our design process.
Yeah, this is, this is right by where Public Works just cleaned up the sidewalk. Right north of this signal is where we had, we have a burned-out, messed-up house, and we had pictures of people couldn't even walk on the sidewalk because the trees were overgrown, so.
Yes, in fact, there's a pedestrian connection right across the street here. That burned-out house is right on the far side.
Yeah.
So we did quite a bit of cleanup in there and so folks can walk through there a little better, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion that we do approve the intergovernmental agreement, Department of Transportation, for $588,000 to upgrade traffic signals at the intersection of Lancaster and McClay Road.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Now we got those contracts all done, now we get to go move dirt and do some work, huh? Appreciate it. Our next item is, we're gonna open up a contract review board, and Colleen is here with us to consider approval of an Amendment Number 1 to the Public Improvement Agreement with Hydro Temp Mechanical to reinstate the contract and have a substantial completion date of September 30th, 2016, and final completion date of January 21, 2017.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Jacob Klopfelter. Camber Schlag is on vacation this week, so I'm here on her behalf.
Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
He's my wingman.
All right.
Colleen Kunshafen, Business Services Director.
So in October of 2014, Marion County issued an RFP for services relating to the HVAC system at the jail. Contract was awarded in December of 2014. The project start date was deferred because of a concurrent project going on at the Court Annex. Ultimately, the contract had an expiration date of January 21st of 2016, and that date came and went, and the project was not yet complete. So we are here today to ask for a reinstatement of that contract. The Marion County purchasing rules allows for a reinstatement within 90 days of the contract expiration, so we're asking to go outside those rules, but still within what's allowed under statute.
Okay. Yes.
Couple of questions, but first of all, what's, what's the status of the system there now? Is heating and cooling being done adequately and...
Yes, it is. We're having, we had a commissioning, so we got through the majority of it and had a commissioning and saw that there were some things that were not done. We had some issues with some of the pipes and some of the coils that were put in, so when we noticed that, we stopped everything, we're withholding, withholding the rest of the payment until that's remedied. So we have some operational issues they need to remedy, some warranty issues they need to remedy, and the installation issue that they need to remedy. And that's why we're extending, because we don't want to close the contract without them remedying these situations. And these came up after the commissioning, and so that was part of the, that's when you find some of these things that occur.
So sticking with the working with 100 and some degrees coming, I want to make sure that that part's good.
Yeah, they're working. We're, we're doing some alternate stuff to make sure they're working properly. They're working today. My concern's the future and that the warranty doesn't stay as long as it should, because we're already past that point that the warranty should have started, and I'm saying the warranty doesn't start till this is fixed. So we're trying to extend the warranty along with that to make sure that we get the benefit of the doubt of the six months that the warranty hasn't started yet, in my opinion, till this is fixed.
So you've already said this, but I'm just reading the list as it said when I, when I saw this, I go, this doesn't sound simple, but code compliance, installation errors, warranty issues, provision of manuals and documentation, and then needing appropriate weather windows to install. And then the amounts that, I guess you hold it back, but $59,000 and with a credit back, is that still enough incentive to get those done? And these don't sound like minor issues.
Some of these things have already been done, so they just finished some of the installation issues around the cladding of the ducting itself, so that's been done. The warranty issue is the extension I was just mentioning. They're gonna have to reinstall the coils, and we have to have an appropriate weather window. We can't do that now with our 100-degree temperatures coming. We'll do those later in the fall. So that's when, September 30th is when we try to get those done, and they, they'll take some time to do. The code compliance has to do with all of that, it's just making sure that all things are in code compliance at the end of this, and when the inspection comes, there won't be any other inspection issues. So that raised another issue for me. So September 30th long enough? I mean, what if it rains all of September, or it stays? They're inside. I mean, for the most part, they're inside. It's really just, it's the high temperatures that we're worried about, so we don't want to switch them in high temperatures. And the colder temperatures, we can heat the building, it's the cooling that becomes the effect. Okay, so, and you don't think it's gonna be this warm in September? Well, it'll still be warm in September, but hopefully not 100 degrees. It could. That's why we're asking for the, really, the full completion is in January, that we'll have that we'll have that weather window to finish everything up.
Okay, well, and if the date's not sufficient, you'll be back and we'll extend it again.
Yes, yeah. If there's any other issues that come up, we'll be back to talk to you about that.
Okay.
All right. If it's this warm in September, we got other issues.
Yeah.
We're going to run out of water again. Okay.
I would move approval of amendment number one to the public improvement agreement with Hydro Temp Mechanical to reinstate the contract and have a substantial completion date of September 30th, 2016, and final completion date of January 21st, 2017.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
We'll close the concrete, close the contact review board and we don't have anybody, we don't have any public hearings today, so that finishes our business of the day. I guess I will read the calendar. Tomorrow is the 18th, Thursday at 8:00 a.m. we have the City of Salem, Marion County breakfast, which got confirmation that the mayor will be there and I believe the mayor-elect, oh, no, the mayor and Steve Powers will be there. Just got confirmation on that. And tomorrow, the 18th, at 10:00 a.m., Hennington Cold Storage groundbreaking at Mill Creek Corporate Center. I think I forgot to say that tomorrow's 8 o'clock meeting is at Sassy Young and at 1244 State Street, Salem. The 10 o'clock meeting with Hennington Cold Storage is at Mill Creek Corporate Center. On the 22nd, Monday at 8:30, calendar review here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 22nd, 9:00 a.m., management update here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. On Monday, the 22nd, 11:00 a.m., a BOC CAO meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.6602ABDFHI here in the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Also on Monday, busy day, at 3:00 p.m., work session, a new rules exempt staff slash salary test here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday at 8:30 on the 23rd, Community Corrections Board Meeting, location Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. The 23rd, Tuesday at 10:30, Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Wednesday, the 24th, back here for board session. And Wednesday, the 24th, 2:30 p.m., Capitol Community Television CCTV taping at the CCTV Office 575 Trade Street, southeast. Anything you want to share that's happened?
If I could, one, and I'm watching the news from Baton Rouge and the flooding there. I don't know, just the, the idea that you can never really feel secure. I mean, they're just sitting there, all of a sudden, there's two feet of rain in two days and, and it's eight feet higher than what was a previous disaster and I'm feel sorry for them, see a lot of scenes of rescues and things and always reminds me that that can happen here. I think of that rain we had a couple of years ago that kind of like the cloud just stayed over Turner for a few days and, and what it, I don't know, just, just to be aware and ready that things happen.
Not only that, but then this morning, I heard on the radio that fire in Southern California, San Bernardino, they're evacuating 80,000 people?
Is that the one that was arson caused too?
I don't know. Yesterday, it was, it was a thousand acres within an hour, they said, I think, and now it's up to 18,000 acres or something like that. I can't remember, but some of those disasters that are happening everywhere, we, we just, you know, the lady, I read the article, the people that went down from Red Cross here in Oregon, there was a couple of people and they said it would help them prepare for the cascade event and I'm thinking, wow.
Yeah.
Not good stuff.
Kimberly Elaine, I don't know if you remember her?
Yes.
But she is living in Louisiana now and actually sent pictures that they, her house wasn't flooded, but there was a lot of water all around it. They had sandbags around her house.
The other part, and we've been, I'm worried about it, what FEMA's doing and things, you know, for flood insurance, but the quote, or the statistic came out, like one out of eight were insured there. So that, that says a lot of personal agony too, you have this loss and not even covered.
And the, and the water, and the flood insurance.
I just, I take it that an area didn't consider that that's really a possibility, so very few have it.
So on a different note, I went over, went over to Willamette Family Medical Center. Lisa and I went and took a tour yesterday morning. This is out on Lancaster, it's in the old Circuit City Building. You remember over, not too far?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in the same lot as the, the Roadhouse Girl, right?
Yeah.
And.
I know where the old Circuit City was.
Yeah, and it's really lovely. They've remodeled it, it very much looks like a large doctor's office clinic and they have...
What's it called?
Willamette Family Medical Center and they serve low-income people, families, individuals with, they have pediatricians and they have, you know, primary care and they have some mental health care there now and, what do they call it? Rheumatologists that they're getting for people who have arthritis and have to have infusions. Anyway, learned a lot. It was, it was fun to be, I told, I told them that I had spent many early mornings the day after Thanksgiving in line in their, in their medical center because I used to go to Circuit City all the time and get electronics.
Oh.
On the, on the, on the, on the Black Friday, you know, when you go...
As I say, don't eat so much, do you?
Yeah, we'd, we're there like at four in the morning, getting all kinds of stuff way back when.
The fax machine.
Before you could order them online.
Nice.
Yeah, so, anyway, that was fun. Lot of, lot of behavioral care network and organized care organizations stuff going on right now.
Grand opening tomorrow for her groundbreaking for the storage facility. And I should have talked with Cindy, it sounds like the tie-in, one of that she mentioned would, would work for the Mill Creek Center eventually. I'm hoping someday we'll have a lot of exits out, out on 22 right there.
Yeah, you know, that, we heard last week, I think, while you weren't there, but that state breakfast that NorPAC's shipping stuff, they've got storage out in like eastern Washington that they have to haul back here.
Down Eugene and even further, they talked about one time.
Yeah, so that should really help spur some, some more work there. PGE or actually Covanta wants to talk to NorPAC about using steam and, you know, the idea of expansion of that processing out there. And so I talked with Jan Fritsch yesterday and said, we'll try to set that up.
I worked on it 30 years ago and since I've been here, but that'd be wonderful. I just can't believe any, any heat should just be lost in it, so.
Right.
But we got to, it just helps everybody.
There was something else that, when you were speaking, that came to my mind, I just can't remember what it was I was going to say. But, yeah, so we'll see how that goes.
Otherwise, it's kind of a quiet time. I like this time of year, actually. I told you, I told Kevin I should tell you this, we need a little controversy. We need to liven this up a little bit.
No.
He wasn't behind.
No.
I think there's some just under the surface.
You think it'll come on its own, all right.
What? What's under the surface?
Controversy.
Controversy.
Well, oh, I know what it was I was going to say, speaking of controversy.
Oh, good.
Well, this is not controversial, but it, it's on the subject that's been controversial. It's in your office, I read the Woodburn Independence, the new reporter Larry, who was here during, did a great job on reporting on the facts of the marijuana, what's really happening with our referral. If you get a chance, I know how you go through the, we go through them really quick, make sure you grab that, it's on the front page.
All right.
And read that article.
You see my picture last week?
Yep, it was in, it was in there too, so, so I just, in fact...
I had to make it large to see if that was really you that couldn't tell.
I sent him a card welcoming, because, you know, he's a new reporter, but I just thought he did an excellent job of covering the facts and not putting any opinions in there. When you get a chance, read that article, that we finally got somebody that wrote the real story.
Looking into it.
Yeah. In, in fact, the title...
Send that on to the, nevermind.
I know, I, I know, I thought the same thing, what you were just going to say. But even, even the caption, even the title was, I think it says, "County will let voters decide," right? I mean, it was just, it was well done, it wasn't like...
Maybe we should send that out through our county newsletter and say this, maybe it's a good explanation of it.
It is, it is. Maybe when you get done reading it, give it back to Jan, we can, we can use it as a, one of our newsletters.
Yeah, that actually should go out in that community newsletter that Jolene's working on. I talked with her before I came down on some other ideas for articles.
I have to go back to the groundbreaking, I'm on Angel, what, what was happening there is my sister Kay was taking the picture and they said, throw a little dirt, and I'm a bit aggressive, so you may see, see some dirt and rocks flying rather high.
I've seen that picture on Facebook, I've seen that picture in the newspaper. All right, are we good?
Yep.
Oh, that's iced tea, not water, that's, all right. All right, we're going to adjourn.